Twenty of the Acts of 2021 on June 16th, 2021 Governor Baker signed into law. An act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This act includes an extension until March 31st of 2023 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 2012 2020 executive order. Thus, this meeting is being conducted by a remote participation by the board. I am granting permission to Westwood Media Center to record it. We will jump into the chair's update. And wanted to let everyone know that the what Dead and Westwood Water District has rescinded all water restrictions as of Wednesday, October 19th. The Water District thanks all of the residents for diligently complying with the mandatory waters restrictions this summer. And you can visit their website at www.dwd.org for other conservation restriction tips. Okay, let's move on to the election. The state election is just a couple of weeks away, November 8th. On the last day to register to vote is coming up on October 29th. In-person registration is being held at the Office of the Town Clerk from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Online voter registration is open until 11:59 p.m. on October 29th. There is accessible electronic voting system. As a result of the election reform bill that was signed into law on June 22nd of this year titled the Votes Act. The Massachusetts State of Massachusetts has implemented an accessible electronic voting system. If you have a disability that prevents you from marking a paper ballot independently, you may qualify to use the accessible vote by mail system. The accessible vote by mail system is available to voters who are blind or have vision impairments, mobility slash dexterity disabilities or other disabilities that make it difficult or impossible to effectively access a paper vote by mail ballot. Because of the inability to either independently read, write, or hold it manipulate a standard writing material and print it. You can contact town clerk for more information at 781-326-3964 or via email at dpowers@townhall.westwoodMA.us. Voting by mail can be accessed through November Tuesday, November 1st at 5:00 p.m. Completed ballots can be hand delivered to the office of the clerk during regular business hours, deposited into a secure ballot box located in front of the Westwood Police Station, or mailed to Town Hall in a posted page envelope provided in your ballot packet. Completed ballots must be received honor before the close of polls on Election Day, November 8th, 2022, or postmarked honor before November 8th, 2022, and received no later than 5:00 p.m. Saturday, November 12th by United States Postal Service. Our early voting schedule is at the police station in Gillette Meeting Room. Tuesday, October 25th through Friday, November 4th, and then in-person voting on Election Day will be at the consolidated polling place of Westwood High School Gymnasium at 200 Manhattan Street. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We have a reminder that Veterans Day is upcoming. We're planning ceremonies to be held at Veterans Park on November 11th, 2022. Some of the initial plans include a ceremony that will take place at Veterans Park held at 11:00 a.m. In the event of inclement weather, we will move the ceremony to the Council on Aging at 60 Manhattan Street. If the ceremony is to be moved, we will send out an alert prior to the event and post that information to the town website. We will have a number of speakers, including American Legion Commander Dick Pastor. And then the final item for the chair's update. Very happy to announce that on October 20th this year, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada awarded Westwood the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our annual comprehensive report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. We have had a long history of receiving this award and it is excellent that we continue to be recognized for the stewardship. The certificate is an achievement.
It's Pat.
Pat, we can hear you.
I can hear you, Pat.
The Certificate of Achievement, an award for financial reporting, is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. And it is our 25th year in a row that our finance department has received this award. And I would like to congratulate Chris, Pam, and all of the folks in the accounting department and the finance department that for their achievement again this year. Now, we will be heading into executive session to discuss two issues. The first pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, subsection 21a2, to discuss strategy with respect to contract negotiations for non-union personnel. And the second pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, subsection 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining unit for union personnel, both of which could be detrimental to discuss in open session. And we will be returning to open session upon the conclusion of executive session. And Chris, when do we expect that to be? 6:45?
I think we were thinking 6:30, 6:35 originally. So I would say between 6:30 and 6:45.
Okay, given the delay in the start, I would say, you know, err on the side of caution somewhere around 6:40. So with that, I would, we need a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, I move that we go into executive session for the two aforementioned reasons.
I second that.
Ms. LeBlanc Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We will see you back here in a few minutes, folks. 6:38, two minutes earlier than we had originally said that we might be back. And the next item on our scheduled action is a, an update from our town energy manager, Tom Philbin, on the status of solar phase two. And I believe, Tom, you are here, correct?
You're unmuted, Tom.
You're muted. Well, Tom is getting unmuted. I'll give a little bit of background. Back in 2020, the comprehensive plan set a number of goals for conservation, sustainability, and resiliency, which included incorporating renewable energy sources at all town properties. We currently stand 52% of our municipal and school electricity comes from those renewable sources. Phase one, which was completed, are the rooftop arrays on the high school Martha Jones Elementary, Downey Elementary. Phase two includes solar canopies at Westwood High School, and then solar arrays on the middle school gym and solar canopies at the police station and Council on Aging. And I will let, we have Tom in now. Is he able to be heard?
Yeah. There he is.
Need to put your video on, Tom.
All right.
It says it can't start the video because the host has stopped it, is the thing. Anyway, you have to do without my face.
Very good, Tom. So it's, why don't you pick it up with what we're proposing?
Hold on a minute now. I got permission now. There we go.
Very good. There we go. Take it away, Tom.
All right. This is the program phase two. As you all know, we did a phase one. And we have now started our phase two. In phase two, we have really four projects for sure and two additional ones, which I think have a high probability of going forward. We finally got concurrence from the school committee to do the parking lot at the high school and to do the middle school roof addition. And then we have the Council on Aging canopies. We have some design gone forward on that. And then on the police station, the town hall in the back, we have some designs now reaching about 30% complete for those three, four projects that are coming along. So this is what we call phase two. But in addition to that, if you see on the next slide, we have two additional areas. The next one, please, Trish. The Deerfield School Roof, we checked out and the, there's no short-term plans that would probably make a problem for solar. So we're thinking about adding solar to the Deerfield Roof as well. And then at the new school, of course, was designed to be solar ready. So we're going to be adding hopefully a solar to that as well. All of this will be combined into a series of power purchase agreements, a draft of which has been given to town council. And it's now being edited and comments back and forth. Eventually, assuming everything goes forward, the power purchase agreement will come before the select board and be asking permission after everybody reviews it for, to allow Chris Coleman to sign the agreement. But right now, we're going forward with these four projects. And we also have the other two. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see some of the renderings of these different. This is the rendering of what it looks like at the, at the high school. If you remember initially, we had it in two parking lots. And what we've done now is we've taken the entire project and moved it over to the student parking lot. The reason for that is it, it allows us a number of things. First of all, it keeps the whole faculty lot open so that for all of the student activities that are going to be going on around graduation, that's open for them. On Westwood Day, it allows for the large vendor vehicles to come in there. It also allows for a stage at the far end. If we go all the way to the right, you can see we keep that area open again, the stages for Westwood Day. And then we back up the canopy so that if we go to the next slide, I think you'll see.
Before you leave, before you leave that one, actually, this is even better.
Yeah, the next one's a bit better. Go ahead. See, you can see that the back row of the canopies, we're going to construct a concrete pathway. And the canopies will then give shelter for anybody disabled who wishes to be sitting or anyone at all really who wishes to be watching the games on that field. This will give them rain and the sun shelter for anybody there. And of course, the path itself, a whole part of the construction will allow that to happen.
The lowege boxes for that field?
Pardon me?
I mean, it just seems like premium seating for the field, that's all.
It is premium seating, yes, yes. We're gonna, I guess we'll get them all to take a little solar charge for that. But anyway, that's the, that one, I've tried it in this particular one to take everyone I could think of into account. I mean, we got inputs from the high school, we got inputs from the recreation department. We got inputs from the person who runs the activities for the seniors. We got inputs from the school committee. I mean, and I can't think of anyone that didn't get committed, but there's always somebody who has other comments. But I think this is a great solution. And it really maximizes the use of space and allows a lot of open space still. The clearance on these canopies is 13 feet, six inches, which should allow the biggest of the vehicles to go through, allows the buses underneath. And I'm making sure now I have Jim McCarthy checking out some of the vehicles that'd be used for plowing or for salting or something to make sure they all clear under there as well. We have one vehicle that he was nervous about and we're just checking that out. But in any event, we could raise it even a few more inches if we had to.
Tom, real quick, just a question here for you. We're currently at 52% renewable for the municipal and school use. What would this do, the complete phase two, as you're presenting here toward reaching that 90% goal?
It'll bring us up somewhere in north of 75%. And I say somewhat north because, for example, the, some of the projects, the outputs vary slightly, not too slightly, but as much as 10%, depending on how we finalize some of the design. So it could be more, it won't be less.
Okay.
But it'll bring us up to the 75% level as well, as well.
Thank you.
So we're making progress towards the 100%. And don't forget, as we finish the new Hanlon School, our electric consumption will go way up because we have no, but we have no more gas. And then as we improve the town hall, little by little converting that off of fossil fuels as well. For example, the upstairs, we have a lot less gas consumption in the town hall now. But we have more electric consumption because we converted the upper floor to wall split systems. We expect to do something similar on the, on the lower floor, which will bring down the gas to almost nothing, but it'll make the electric consumption town wire go up slightly. So we have a slightly increasing, including, increasing rather, consumption of electricity going on, but decreasing gas consumption wherever we're doing this. Okay, that brings us then to the Council on Aging solar canopies. Here again, we have two major areas that we've taken as much as we could into account here. There are no major destruction of any of the trees. We kept the hot lot intact. And there's some overlap of the potential patio that's being built. And again, the feeling is that that overlap will actually protect, give us some protection for the weather again. I think the next slide shows the council a little clearer. This is what it will look like there on the side nearest to the stadium in the front. Okay, and again, the next one shows the back. So the Council on Aging planning is coming along very well as well. This will be a lot bigger than we thought and will help the financial aspects of that will be very much more favorable than initially thought. Also, the Council on Aging, we got an earlier start on it and as a result, it's in an earlier tranche on the smart program. So it's going to get larger incentives overall than some of the other projects that we're in the middle of. The next one will show you again from the above what the police station area that we're looking at for the police garage. Again, here we went and we got the input from the fire chief because there was some concern that would interfere with access to the roof in case of a fire. He said, no, that there were enough other ways to get up there if they ever had to. This particular one, though, we're going to expand all the way down the full length of that parking lot and then turn it and go all the way halfway up to a town hall. So it'll approximately double the size of the canopies there on the, on the most recent design.
And as I'm looking at this one right here, Tom, this one reads below 139 kilowatts. So as you, is that?
About 260.
They'll go to 260. Thank you.
So that's what we're working on now. But of course, that 260, you know, can fluctuate somewhat, but that's what it looks like. Then on the next slide, you can see what it would look like on the rooftop at Deerfield. And then the plan for the new Hanlon Deerfield, which is be 473 kW. That's a large installation. And that would bring that school to very, very close to near net zero, real zero in terms of consumption. So this is a great addition for this one as well. And this school, the design is really a compliment to everybody who worked on it because it has an EUI of approximately 23, which will make it probably the most efficient school in the state of Massachusetts. So it's really, really came along very well.
Okay, let me ask a question that probably would be on people's minds as they look at something like that. You know, the school is under construction, it is being made ready for solar. You know, it's a big ticket item in terms of cost to the taxpayer. Adding solar to this does what?
No cost because it's done under the power purchase agreement. So there, and all of the solar, there's zero upfront cost. So it's strictly a benefit over the longer term. Another big benefit of all of this solar now is if we look at the long-term contract that we signed, we have a supply rate of approximately 9.9 cents. If we were to go out today to get that contract, we would be paying in the order of about 13 and a half cents. And by the year 2027, that supply is going to go up to approximately 15 to 15 to 16 cents. So we're looking at a 30 to 40% increase in the cost of electric power between now and '27. So it behooves us to put as much solar in and gain price stability and keep the prices down and do as much conservation as we can between now and then. So that when 2027 comes, you're looking at a, you know, $200,000 potential financial shock from these rates. And but if we do our work now, that will be minimal and probably won't occur.
And just with respect to the conversations had on Deerfield, you know, given, I think that's probably one that it's only 69 kilowatts of the total. So that's one I'd be interested in probing a little bit more on just in terms of future use of that school.
Well, we did. And of course, it's being used now. When the new Hanlon opens, that might become the school where they'll use while they're renovating Sheen, which would take a number of years. So we're looking at five to 10 years, no matter what. And everyone I spoke to, regardless of what we choose to do with it, the solar would be a benefit, no matter what we did, because they wouldn't be touching the roof design with some of the preliminary thinking that's been going on now. So that's why we're looking at Deerfield, which you're right. It is in terms of the size, a relatively small contribution to the total. Okay, the next slide, if I may. Yeah, well, we've been sold that we needed a lot more engagement with the locals in the town. So as you can see, what we've done here is we've, we've got the booth at Westwood Day. We've got an article that was presented. It was appeared in the Hometown Weekly, The Patch, The Minute, The Bulletin Board, the Westwood Democrats, we made another presentation to them, the Westwood Women's Democratic Association, the Neighborhood in Action it was in, and so forth. WEAAC has been exceptionally great in getting all of this information out to as many people as possible. And again, we now have a lot of, we made a community-wide presentation through WEAAC. And we have that been recorded by the media center and it's available to anyone and everyone who wants to on the website and they can click and then see it. So we've gotten out there an awful lot with this forum and got a lot of people involved. Myself, Lema de Baptiste, and some of the representatives at Amararesco were all involved in the presentation that was made several weeks ago now. Next slide, please. So I just want to let you know, we're not the first. In fact, we're probably not even in the top 10 in terms of getting these things done. There are, this is four examples of other canopies and rooftops that have been done around the state. The town Lexington, Newton, Wayland, and Natick are all had them and have all had no problems. We've talked to the energy managers in all of these towns. You know, a lot of the people worried about accidents, there have been almost none that I could have been able to find out about. We've had concerns about water and icing and we found that was never a fact. And we found, you know, a lot of people complaining about the look. And so far, most of these towns have said, once it sets up, people accept it and it doesn't seem to be a problem at all. So I would say the experience in all of these towns has been quite positive. And it predicts that ours will be equally positive as we go forward. We go forward again to the next slide, Trish. This gives you a rough timeline and the timeline calls for this to be done, if possible, in the summer of, when the kids are out of school in the summer of '23. What's going to affect that is supply chain constraints. And if we can't get the panels, the steel, and all the other things that are necessary for a project of this magnitude, we would probably slip to the summer of '24. But right now, that's part of the planning that's going on at Amararesco. They're at 30% design on a lot of these things. And of course, to go forward, they need to make sure that we're committed as a town to go forward with all of this. And that, because beyond this now, they're starting to lay out significant amounts of funds to keep this thing going. But depending on supply chain constraints, it's either going to be the summer of '23, that's optimistic, or the summer of '24. The summer of '24 would be the school yard, but we would probably start projects like the Council on Aging and probably the police station. We'd be able to start those before then and probably some of the rooftop work would be able to start before that happened as well. And of course, we have to wait for the completion of the Hanlon before we would do anything on the roofs over there. So all of that is in the planning stages and we're going forward with as much haste as we can. We have the next slide, please, Trish. Yes, we're all approximately, as I mentioned to you, we're pretty close to the design goal, 30% on everything. And we've had a lot of director, we had the chief silver, we had Lena and so forth. All of these people have all had input and the degree to what they agree with what we're doing. We have a power purchase agreement in draft form that's now being reviewed by Pat Ahern and by Lema up at the school. We have a whole series of comments and we have a meeting planned to go over all of our comments with the people at the Amararesco to be sure they're legal people, have no problems with the changes that we would want. And then after that comes back and everybody's changes are incorporated, we would come to have, before the select board again, to have the power purchase agreement approved. I have the next slide, please. Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, so what we need now tonight is, I guess you have the motion before you. We need your approval to go forward with all of these projects so that we can say that we have spoken to the school board, I mean, to the select board and that you guys are in favor of us going forward with these projects.
Well, before we do take that step, I know I sort of use the power of the chair to ask my questions throughout your presentation. So I want to first turn to my colleagues and ask Michael and Mary Ann, do either of you have questions for Tom?
Mary Ann, go ahead.
Thanks, Mike. First of all, thank you, Tom, for your presentation, for all your work. This is so exciting. I'm really proud to hear that the Hanlon Deerfield is probably going to be the most energy-efficient school in the state. I'm just wondering, what is that a function of? You talked about other communities that have been doing great work in this space. What is it about the Hanlon Deerfield that will make us that leader?
Well, has a lot of it has to do with the design of the systems. For example, the geothermal heating, air conditioning system. The fact that they sterilize the return air allows you to need less return air. So you, you lose less heat through the circulation systems. The thickness of the walls, the triple panes, the kind of doors they put in, the orientation of the building. All of this was a product of Maya Plotkin and that committee did a great job of hearing all of the ways to make it as efficient as possible right from the start. And then, and the fact that we got in at the beginning is, is, is the thing that really helped tremendously in making this a very, very efficient school. So it is going along and it should be, it should be really great. I mean, I find it thrilling. I looked at that school and I said, you know, I wish I could go back, but it's a long way back.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Walsh, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I've sat through this several times, as Tom knows. It's been come up several times in the last couple of years and I'm glad that it's finally moving forward. So I see that Lena and the chief came to see us. I don't know if you're thinking, Rob, but I probably, since they joined us, we should probably give them an opportunity to be.
I was going to do that as well. I was going to go next to Lena. Lena, weigh in.
Well, I've had the pleasure of working with Tom on this. How many years now, Tom? Four, five? And we're, my board is completely on board with this. They think it's fabulous. I've talked to my seniors. They think it's fabulous. All of our concerns have been dealt with. And I'm excited that we could become, you know, on the forefront for senior centers being, you know, solar and environmentally thoughtful. So thank you, everyone. We're very thrilled, as is my board and my staff. We all think this is a great idea.
Excellent. Thank you, Lena. Chief Deckers, I know you're, you're in attendance as well, but I think you're an attendee and not a panelist. I don't know if we've got you to where you can see.
No, he's on.
I saw him on the attendee list.
Chief Silva.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, thank you for having me. I've been working on this with Tom for a long time. Been talking about energy efficiency since before we built the police station, probably back as early as 2014. We had the first gas-electric hybrid vehicle in town. And like myself and the Cambridge Commissioner were the first two chiefs in the state to have it. So we've been trying to pursue this for a long time and Tom and WEAAC and everybody has been very supportive. So, you know, certainly looking forward to it and appreciate it. Think it'll be certainly environmental enhancement, also be a safety enhancement having those cruisers in the inclement weather, not being covered with snow. We've had officers actually slip and fall and get injured out in the parking lot in the past. So there's additional benefits, you know, beyond the obvious that we're all looking to get with the energy efficiency and the clean energy safety benefits as well. So thank you for everyone's work on that.
Excellent. Thank you, chief. Let's see here. Son calling in. Son calling in.
So you want me to motion?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay. I move for the select board to permit Amararesco to proceed with the project development of Phase Two solar program for potential implementation of the proposed arrays at the Council of Aging parking lot and the Westwood Police Station parking lot area.
I second that.
Okay, roll call vote, Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lumber for being here as well. Okay, under new business, um we have uh Chris, I'm gonna let you take take the lead on this one so that you can uh make an announcement here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so happy to announce um that we have uh made an offer and offer's been accepted for our new Assistant Town Administrator Finance Director. Um, and her name is Stephanie McManus. Um, Stephanie is coming to us with um years of municipal experience um in three different communities, most recently working uh for the city of Boston in the Recreation Department as the Finance Director. Uh, we're excited to have uh Stephanie join us. I have Molly, our uh Molly uh Keen, who is our Assistant Town Administrator, Director of Human Resources is also here and she has some additional information she'd like to add.
Okay, Molly, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just want to reiterate how excited be starting with us. She'll be starting on November seventh. Um, and she'll be in town a couple of times before that, just getting the lay of the land. And we are asking the board to approve and sign this uh employment agreement.
Okay. Any questions from my colleagues?
I I did have one question. Chris, is she gonna sit in Pam's office?
That will be the office, yes.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, I don't have any other questions. When I went by today, it was empty. I'm like, hmm, okay. Okay, so I move the select board to approve and sign the employment agreement between the town and the new Assistant Town Administrator slash Finance Director with the effective day of November seventh, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And for the electronic signatures of the board to be affixed to the employment agreement.
I second that.
Roll call vote, Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Welcome to Stephanie and we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting on your first day.
Thank you, uh, select board.
Okay. Um, let's see, I believe there is a
Uh, the integrated agreement with SEIU?
Yes. Take us through the the background on that one, Chris.
I'm gonna ask Molly, can you just walk us through that one, please?
Absolutely. Um, so the last two MOAs signed with the SEIU group for FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three were one-year deals. That's was very common during COVID, just to keep things moving. Uh, the MOA would have been voted by the board right before it went into effect. Uh, I believe the FY twenty-three was voted in May or June of this year. After an MOA is accepted by both parties and the wages go into effect and the language um is changed, somebody has to take the very tedious job in doing a red line of the existing collective bargaining agreement and integrating all of the language changes into um that one document. So everybody's looking at the same document. So what we have here is the collective bargaining agreement from FY nineteen to twenty-one. Uh, and included into that now are the language changes that were agreed in twenty-two and twenty-three. So this will be the document going forward that will be bargained soon enough. Um, so we are looking for the select board to approve and sign this agreement. It's not agreeing to anything that the select board hasn't already agreed to.
Any questions from my colleagues?
No questions.
I would entertain a motion.
So I move that the select board to approve and sign the collective bargaining agreement, also known as the CBA, between the town and SEIU Local Eight 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 Union for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three. And for the electronic signatures of the board to be affixed to the collective bargaining agreement.
I second that.
Roll call vote, Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much, Molly. Next up, uh, I believe we have a um mitigation fund additional use request. Chris, why don't you take us through that? And I believe you have Chief Deckers um uh here as well, right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So previously, I want to say, um, I believe it was back in February of twenty-two. Uh, the select board authorized us to use the mitigation funds. And these are the funds that were provided to the town um as part of the university app development. Um, to use that for the fire station headquarters feasibility study. Um, we have to put the RFP on the street. We have gotten responses back. Um, what I'm asking the board, one of the things that we did talk about internally was also as part of that feasibility study to do an operational study as well. The board did not provide us with the authorization to do that. Um, so one of the things that we are looking for is the authorization to do an operational study that would be part of our feasibility study. And then we have um two other requests um for you regarding public safety. One is a public safety infrastructure radio feasibility uh study. And that is, and Chief Deckers can certainly speak in greater detail about this, but that is the equipment and the network and the infrastructure that's in place for our public safety personnel to communicate using the radios both on their persons as well as in their vehicles, as well as dispatch um to conduct a study. The system was in place as as early as the nineties. Um, and we're looking to um have a study done of that, to make sure that we have the equipment in the right spots. Um, if we need to increase um the coverage and if there's any equipment that would need to be updated. This equipment has been monitored and updated by the uh chief, both chiefs um as we're going through, but this would be a study to look at new technologies and new ways of providing that type of coverage. And and Chief Deckers could certainly add on um if I've missed anything. And the other is something new that I'm gonna ask Chief Deckers if he can just speak about in greater detail. This is radio box repeater installation. This is a requirement that's coming through as because Channel Five has changed their frequency. So Chief Deckers, if you could just share the board some of the details of that, please?
Uh, sure. A couple of years ago, and I don't know if it's a change of frequency or strength of what they're sending out, but what it has done is um a couple of years ago, actually drowned out our signal for sending um the radio box fire alarm. So around town, you used to see the old game well boxes that people could go up if they had a problem, pull the alarm. Those have all been now switched over or slowly switched over and we're in the final phases of switching everybody in town over to the radio box by January first of twenty-four. Um, but what has happened here specifically down in the university AV area town is they've either boosted their signal um or changed a a signal. And it basically has stopped some of our boxes from being able to send the alarm signal back to dispatch so that we can actually dispatch folks out. So we have to add additional equipment to the um to the system. And that's what the money um Chris is asking for this evening. Um, it's just shy of, I think, fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars um to put this repeater on that we have gotten permission put on at Eversource. And uh along with some other equipment that we have up in that area. And that will grab that signal and then repeat it back to us so that we do not miss out on these alarms from these radio boxes.
Thank you, Chief. And and Mr. Chair, um, the recommendation that we have is not to go beyond the amount of money that the mitigation fund that we have in the mitigation fund, which is currently three hundred fifty thousand. We're just asking the board to provide um authorization to use this fund for those other uses. So even if um the anticipated amounts that we have are fully used um for all for all four of the uses, we would still have funds left a little north of a hundred thousand, approximately a hundred and six thousand dollars left in that mitigation fund. Now, there may be some other funding sources that we could also use. We're still looking into that. So again, not to not looking to exceed that amount of money.
Okay. Any questions from my colleagues?
Just a a comment that I think it's very important that we do the operational study in addition to the feasibility study for Station One so that we can uh better understand what our needs are now and what they're likely to be in the future, seeing as we're thinking of what the future needs of a building would be. And if we build a building, we'd want it to be around for hopefully fifty years. So I think it's very important to look at what those uh service levels are, what they need to be, what we want them to be.
Okay. Mr. Walsh, any questions?
None whatsoever. So that leaves us a balance in the um in the funds for still a hundred and six thousand dollars, correct?
Yes, Mr. Walsh, if the full amount was expended, yes.
Okay.
If there are no further questions, I would agree with Ms. LeBlanc Cummings in terms of the need for the operational study. Um, and I know, Chief, you were relying in some way, shape or form on, you know, um devices that were being installed on some of the buildings as they were being built, because um, I remember one of the restaurants down there having to add something to to the top of their building in order to get that um to be able to be safe um and and approved for occupancy. So um, I think that these are good uses of these mitigation funds. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I move that the select board to authorize the use of university station mitigation funds for a fire department operational study, a public safety radio infrastructure feasibility study, and a radio box repeater installation.
I second that.
Roll call vote, Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Deckers.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And uh next up is to look at our meeting dates. Um, going out, did anybody have, uh, do you all have a chance to look at the meeting dates that take us through May twenty twenty-three? And did anyone have uh any questions or dates that they are conflicted with?
I don't.
I don't. Uh, the only one that I'm not sure of, Rob, is uh January thirtieth. Let me just see here, because I I believe that I am flying home that night. It may not be back in time for a meeting. That's the only date.
Yeah, I guess the the only, the only, the uh, the only ones that I was gonna question um Chris and Tish were the January dates um because of our, you know, process to getting to the warrant book. Um, I imagine that the conflict on the twenty-third is also Michael because of he returning from wherever he is. Is that accurate? I mean, so it doesn't matter who it is, it's just we have a conflict on the twenty-third. Does that conflict also exist on the twenty-fourth? Because if we move the meeting from the thirtieth to the thirty-first, I believe we're also um is that, is that a FinCom night as well?
Um, January thirty-first is what we're looking at right now in a FinCom warrant night, yes.
Okay. So we would need to be able to have discussion prior to that night, I would think.
Yes, and in the, in Mr. Chair, um prior boards have also met prior to, on the same evening, but prior to the FinCom meeting. So that would also be another option.
I I'd be open to that as well, if that makes it easier for you, Michael, in getting back and being able to participate.
It does. And as I look, the only other date, of course, we've never done it before, but I wouldn't expect everyone to know, is we never have a select board meeting on the night before town election. We usually got it, we've usually moved that week to Wednesday after the town election.
Okay, on the twenty-fourth of April, you're talking?
Yes, yes, to the twenty-sixth. Mainly because, mainly because one of us is always running.
True enough. True enough. So I have no issue with moving that date to the Wednesday. Mary Ann, any problem with that?
It's fine with me.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, so the thirtieth of January goes to the thirty-first of January prior to FinCom and the twenty-fourth of April goes to the twenty-sixth of April.
Yeah, other than that, everything looks great to me.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody.
Historically, the FinCom still meets at seven o'clock, so you can have up to an hour beforehand to meet on the thirtieth of Jan- uh thirty-first of January. If you want to meet at six.
That sounds good. I think we have uh a plan. Okay. Moving to old business, that concludes new business. Moving to old business, um continue our discussion about reconstituting the Long Range Financial Planning Committee. Um, the original purpose of that committee is focusing on long-term financial issues such as five-year projections of revenue expenditures, reserve accounts, what capital budgeting and planning policy should look like, our overall debt management, what uh health insurance and benefit costs are projected to be, our financial policies and the impact on both residential and commercial tax rates and other uh post-employment benefits other than pensions. So the uh composition of the committee should be composed of the following voting members, and there are thirteen. And and then some non-voting members that would be ex officio from departments. Um, so the the elected voting members would be a a select board representative, and we have uh suggested the chair. Um, and that has been the tradition. Um, the school committee chair, the tax collector, the town treasurer, the chair of the planning board, the chair of the Board of Assessors, the chair of the Audit Committee or Audit Committee Representative. And then we would have six voting at-large representatives from the community. Each of us has put forward uh two names and I I think this is an outstanding slate of uh individuals. Wanted to ask my colleagues if anyone had questions about any of the uh the members proposed. Okay, hearing none. Um then the ex officio non-voting members would be the town administrator, Chris Coleman, the superintendent of schools, Emily Parks, the assisting Assistant Town Administrator, Molly Keen, and uh as the Human Resources Director and Assistant Town Administrator, Finance Director, the newly uh Stephanie, give me, give me a second here. What is it, Chris? Oh. What's that? McManus, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, Town Council, Patahearn, Community Economic Development, Nora Lockman, and Department of Public Works Director, Todd Corchon. So, um, if there are, is there any discussion on the reconstitution of the Long Range Financial Planning Committee?
I just have a question, Rob. Um, I I I think that composition sounds great. Uh, we're we're lucky to pull this group together. Um, and I think it certainly makes sense for the select board chair to to be on that committee. Um, but as far as other select board members, if they wanted to listen, what what are we thinking? Obviously, we have to post. I just wanted to raise that issue.
I'm gonna defer to Town Council, Patahearn, on this one and and in terms of how we would approach that. Um, I certainly value both of your points of view as well. So let's uh turn to Pat.
So I think, I think the meeting obviously is going to have to be a posted meeting. Uh, so uh, if you wanted to to err on the side of caution, I think if you're going to watch and attend and if you think you might want to speak, you should be listed as an attendee just to cover yourself in from an open meeting law perspective. That's what I would recommend.
I I I would love the opportunity to to listen so that there's continuity and and hear the discussion. I'm not sure that um, you know, if this is able to be recorded, given um our our uh
I think these, I I think um that this is one that we should look to have recorded, given that we're only looking to have these as quarterly discussions because of the sort of, you know, lack of dynamic nature of the topic. Um, I think it's just it would behoove us to do that even if that sort of fell outside of the current agreement with what we have with the Westwood Media Center. So we can, we can revisit uh making sure that those are recorded, because I think that would be a benefit to the community as well.
I I think so too. Great. Thank you.
Michael, any questions?
No, no, I'm glad we're we're revamping that committee.
Excellent. Um, then I would uh entertain a the the actions as suggested.
Okay. So there are three separate motions and let's start with first, I uh to appoint that the select board take the following actions. First, to appoint Select Board Chair Rob Gaudy as a member of the Long Range Financial Planning Committee with a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, or until the board reorganization in the spring of twenty twenty-three.
I second that.
Okay, roll call vote, Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Second, to appoint Nancy James Skipwells, Joe Privatira, Kyle Jordan, Julian Bride, and Melissa McDonough as at-large resident representatives on the Long Range Financial Planning Committee with terms to expire on June 30th, 2023.
I second that.
And before I take a vote on that, I just want to, you know, commend all of us on the diversity of this group. We have seniors who've been in town for a long time, as well as young parents who hope to be in town for a long time. And, and the conversations that will be had at these meetings will have a longer impact on them. So with that, I will move to a roll call vote, Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
And finally, to appoint Chris Coleman, Emily Parks, Molly Keen, Patrick Ahern, Laura Lockne, and Todd Corchen as ex officio members of the Long Range Financial Planning Committee with terms to expire on June 30th, 2023.
I second that.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
It may be the question that was on the tip of my tongue, but by all means, sir.
And given the, the most recent vote of the select board this evening with our new Assistant Town Administrator Finance Director, I'd like to recommend adding Stephanie McManus to that ex officio list, if that's okay with the board.
Wait, you want us to do a long-range financial planning and you want us to add the financial director?
It may sound odd, yes, but that's what I would recommend.
I add that we include Stephanie McManus, the new Finance Director, to be included on the ex officio members as we just announced.
And I second that.
Very good. I will take a roll call vote on this, but before we conclude this item, I believe we may have missed an opportunity to, do we need to vote in the other elected representatives as voting members of this committee?
I believe you do. I don't think you've done that yet.
We have not. So we will take the vote on the ex officios and I will call, roll call vote, Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, if.
Finally, we also, that the select board approve the elected official representatives who will serve as a voting member of the Long Range Financial Planning Committee to include a select board representative, a school committee representative, the town tax collector, the town treasurer, a planning board representative, a board of assessors representative, and the audit committee representative.
I second that.
Roll call vote on that, Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you to.
Chairman, can I ask a procedural question, if I may?
You may.
Is it your intent as a board to have those committees nominate who they want to serve on their committee?
I think that the intent is to have the chair serve unless they choose not to and they want to appoint, designate another representative, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to amend that motion to specify that, sir?
I, I think you should because that's your intent. And so you're saying that the chair will serve of those committees unless they designate someone else.
Okay, let's redo that motion. I say that move that the select board approve seven voting members to include the chair of each of these committees unless they designate someone other than the chair to serve on the Long Range Financial Planning Committee. Those include the select board, the school committee, tax, the town collect, tax collector, town treasurer, planning board, planning board, the board of assessors, and the audit committee.
I second that.
And I will do a roll call vote, Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for the on-the-fly ad level of that one. That was helpful. Thank you, Pat, for pointing out the procedural item. We are now into approval of regular minutes. Did anyone have any questions on the minutes from either September 12th, 2022, or October 11th, 2022?
We have one appointment.
You have one appointment?
We have one appointment.
Thank you. We have an appointment to some of our boards and committees. And I believe we have several openings that I'll let people know about that we're looking for people to serve. We have the Cemetery Commission, the Commission on Disability, the Dedham Westwood Water Commissioner representing our town on that, the Housing Partnership and Fair Housing Commission, the Pedestrian and Bike Safety Committee, and the Westwood Cultural Council. Chris, I believe you have a new appointment for the Commission on Disability.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Chair of the Commission on Disabilities and Barry Goodfellow and I did meet with this candidate, Missy O'Regan. And we would unanimously recommend to the select board that she be appointed to the Commission on Disabilities. We think she'd be a great addition to the commission as well as the community in which she wants to serve. Knowing really, really great person.
Knowing Missy as well as I do, I would say that she is an absolute wonderful addition to this commission. And we would thank her for her willingness to serve in that capacity. Any questions from either of my colleagues?
I echo what you just said, Rob.
Excellent.
So I move the select board to appoint Mary Alice, also better known in town as Missy O'Regan, as a member of the Commission on Disability for a term to expire on June 30th, 2025.
And it is my great pleasure to second that.
Roll call vote, Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And enthusiastically, I confirm that with an I myself. Thank you, Missy. Okay, now moving on to my question regarding the minutes from the September 12th, 2022 and the October 11th, 2022 meetings. Any questions or changes required by either of you?
No.
No.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
So I move the, hold on, I lost my screen here. Sorry. I move the select board approve the September 12th, 22, 2022 minutes as written.
I second that.
Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
And I also move that the, the select board approve the October 11th, 2022 minutes as written.
Second.
Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And for everyone's next information, our next meeting is scheduled for November 7th, 2022, right here on Zoom, but at 6:00 PM. And unless there are any questions from the public and press, I will move us to, or I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I move the select board adjourn our Monday night, October 24th, 2022 meeting.
I second that.
Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night and go Pats.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.